Applause. I was looking over your head. How are you?
Good.
Carrie Rhodes is a familiar face around Turlock, but she's also our Employee of the Month, and it is well deserved. I've been watching you since, well, I've been watching like a hawk since I became mayor, but you are one of our best employees. I really enjoy working with you. I've brought in, what, two stray dogs now? Three stray dogs that I find?
I thought you were trying to take my job.
Yeah, you said I was trying to take your job. No. But if you want my job, we can switch sometime. That's what works. All right. Well, let me read all the formal stuff, and then we can give the microphone over to you, and I'm sure you have some pearls of wisdom for us, and so we'll go from there. So Carrie Rhodes has been named the City of Turlock's Employee of the Month for December 2017. Carrie was nominated for her positive attitude, willingness to help others, and for her compassion for the animals. Carrie works with the Animal Services Volunteers, veterinary offices, and staff with a level of respect that benefit our community and the animals entrusted to our care. An eighteen-year veteran in the city's Animal Services Unit, Carrie started out her career as a volunteer and moved on to full-time status, and has excelled in all aspects of her responsibilities. She worked part-time for six years as a kennel attendant and was made full-time in May 2004. Her personal hobbies: Carrie is married to Brent, her husband of thirteen years, and they have two children, Cheyenne and Jesse. Carrie enjoys camping, bingo, bongo, and spending time with her family. She also has one pet. Just one? Just one?
The rest of them have passed away. It's no more time.
Oh, I didn't mean to bring that up. I'm sorry. So the one pet named Duke, which is a ten-year-old Great Dane. So with that, let's give another round of applause for Carrie Rhodes. She is well deserved. The microphone's yours.
I just want to say thank you. I really enjoy working with the City of Turlock. I've been here for a long time. I love coworkers, the animal shelter, working for the city. It's just great. I love coming in here and giving you guys all a hard time. I can see the smiles. She's here. I know you guys are a little scared that Glenna and I are both in the same room at the same time, but it's okay. So... She'll be up next. So again, I just want to say thank you very much, and I just appreciate the honor of being Employee of the Month, especially with it being our first year of doing it, so it's pretty great that someone gets picked other than just the national breakfast that we have every year. So, thank you very much.
Very cool. This is yours. So, yes. You're on, Jay.
Thank you.
It's your pen. Yeah. Thanks, Carrie. All right, another great special recognition is for Assemblyman Heath Flora. Come on up. Give him a round of applause. Hey, Heath. I'm going to embarrass him sufficiently. As you all know, he's our Assemblyman. We're very proud to have him representing us up in Sacramento. Now, he is the number-two Republican in the Assembly, correct?
It's close.
Close, yeah, the chief whip. And so he's been doing good work up there, so we're really proud of everything you've been doing. But specifically tonight, we're going to recognize his efforts with the Stanislaus Regional Water Authority's Surface Water Project.
It's mic tight.
I think my microphone just went out. You have it back up? Is it on? All right, there we go. So tonight, you all saw me didn't touch it, right? So tonight, we're honoring your efforts on that project. Some of you might know this, but he was instrumental, gave me a call in saying, hey, get down here, or get up here to Sacramento and come talk to the governor's office, because we think we have a great opportunity and a bond coming up, and I'll tell a little bit more about that here. So, in recognition... All right, just one second. All right. I'm going to try this new one. Perfect. See, we're frugal down here in Turlock, unlike up in Sacramento. Anyways, in recognition of Assemblyman Heath Flora, whereas Assemblyman Heath Flora recognized the importance of assisting the cities of Turlock and Series in their quest to obtain legislative authorization of a cost-effective means of delivering the regional surface water supply project that is proposed by the Stanislaus Regional Water Authority, and joined Senator Anthony Canela as a co-author of SB 373 of 2017, which was recently signed into law by Governor Brown. And whereas Assemblymember Flora recognized the opportunity to obtain funding for the regional surface water supply project in the course of discussions and negotiations related to SB 5 of 2017 that will appear on the June 2018 ballot as the California Drought, Water Parks, Climate, Coastal Protection, and Outdoor Access for All Act of 2018. And whereas, this is where it gets good, Assemblymember Flora's keen negotiating skills with the governor, the author, and key stakeholder groups resulted in the availability of thirty million dollars in funding within SB 5 tailored to benefit the Stanislaus Regional Water Authority's Surface Water Treatment Plant and benefit all the residents of Turlock. Now, therefore I, Gary Sorensen, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all our citizens, do hereby commend Assemblymember Heath Flora for his keen negotiating skills, political acumen, and extraordinary effort that resulted in a potential source of state funding that will offset the cost of this water supply project to the citizens of Turlock. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I very appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. This is yours. Thank you, Heath. Thank you. Please, it's all good. Sit down. My staff prepared some amazing notes, which they always have a stroke when I just leave them folded up and actually just talk, so... But we'll keep the recognition. I want to say thank you, and you laid it out very nicely. As a Republican in a super minority in the state of California right now, there's not a lot that we can do. We have to constantly find little ways that we can negotiate and work on things, and this is one of those examples of actually getting something done for our community. It's a project that needed some support, and it's just a privilege to be at the state level to be able to offer the support that we'd so desperately needed to try to keep everything as low-cost as possible for these community members. So I'm excited to represent each and every one of you. We can't do it without you. We can't do it without community support, with community input, so please, whatever you need at the state level, reach out to our office. You folks are all constituents. We are there to represent you, and that is my utmost job, and I take it incredibly serious. So if I don't hear from you, then I don't know what your needs are, and I really want to know that. So I appreciate this beyond belief, and it's an honor to represent Turlock. Thank you.
I've got Heath's real notes right here, so I'm going to steal them. Glenna, come on up. It's Pet of the Month time.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, how are you today? December, is that the right one? Maybe I didn't change it right. Did it right? Is that the right one? Yeah, that's the right one. It should actually be for January, because we did December, so we'll just dismiss that for me. Pet of the Month, I've just received confirmation, will continue to be sponsored by our T-Mats. Please thank them for sponsoring the adoption fees, which include the span neuter microchip, rabies shot, first vaccines for our pets that are adopted through the City of Turlock. This little guy, Kobe, he was our last month's Pet of the Month in December. Remember, he got adopted on the same day, so we included a picture from the family, so he's having a good Christmas with them. These are some of the 2017 Pet of the Month adoptions. Just to kind of recap, these are all the wonderful pets that were adopted in the year 2017. We just wanted to share those with you and their new family members. All of them are happy with their families. We haven't had any returns. This is the Pet of Month that we permitted last month. Remember, I told you that we had one ahead of time for January. I had to give you another one. So that one there was the one that was adopted for last month. Just a refresher for everyone, that our promotion for January is a free microchip for those individuals that live in the city limits of Turlock, limited to three per family. So far, we've had a few people come in, but we just keep pushing that and letting them know this is the best way to get their home, their pet home to you. And, you know what? We are missing a slide. Do you want to see what happened to our slide for the dog that's Pet of the Month? Is there another one? Just real quick. That was the only one I had. Okay. All right. So in addition, just so there is a new Pet of the Month picture that's up, will be up on our website, on Facebook. Continue to follow it. That dog actually got adopted as well. And then again, we want to thank the Turlock Popper Room. We had a total of fifty-five adoptions for the month of December, sponsored by them. Right, thank you.
All right, Stacy Morales. Stacy Morales from the Regional ADA Paratransit Eligibility Service will give us a presentation on Move.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Stacy Morales, I'm the CEO of Move Stanislaus Transportation, and we are a nonprofit agency. We've been in existence since 2010. We work very closely with the four transit operators, including Turlock Transit, and what we do is we help seniors, individuals with disabilities, and veterans with transportation. So we either help them ride public transit or provide volunteer driver programs in order to get them to medical appointments. One of the things that happened in 2015 was there was a study done taking a look at the eligibility process for ADA paratransit services. And with having four transit agencies, there were four different processes. Some of them required going into a doctor's visit and having to pay a copay in order to get a form filled out. Some of them had, you know, eight-page applications. So as a region, what we did with Stanislaus Council of Governments is we took a look at how the processes were currently being done and what we could do to make it better for the residents of the county. And what we came up with is an in-person eligibility process. And I do have some brochures. I'll go ahead and leave it. This is going to start on March 1st. One of the great things is working closely with Move and the four transit agencies, our funding all comes from the same location. So what we were able to do is fund this process through Move and not have to put it on the transit operators, because they're having challenges with meeting Fairbox and federal requirements. So that was able to help them. With this process, there's going to be four locations. It's going to be Turlock, Modesto, Patterson, and Series. So it'll shorten the length of travel time that people would have to the eligibility appointments. Once they go through the eligibility process, we'll provide them, they'll call, schedule an appointment, we'll provide them free transportation to any of the sites for their assessment. They fill out no application. They don't have to go to the doctor and get any type of form signed. The appointment takes a half hour to forty-five minutes, and once they're deemed eligible, they would be provided a photo ID card. And this is where it's very wonderful for the residents, is right now, if you're trying to connect up between the four transit systems, you have to fill out four applications, you have to have it either signed off by agencies, and it's very burdensome to the residents. So once they go through the eligibility process, it's good for three years, and they'll have a photo ID card. It doesn't matter what town they live in. It doesn't matter where they want to travel to and from. If they want to go from Turlock, Series, to Modesto, they're able to get on the paratransit services with having that ID card and being able to schedule appointments. So that's what we're doing. Again, it's March 1st, and we're very excited to get this going, and people that currently are eligible to ride paratransit, they're, they'll continue with their eligibility until it expires. Prior to expiration, what we'll do is send them a postcard, letting them know that they need to call us and schedule an appointment. So we're really excited. I actually managed this program when it was in Stockton, and the residents loved it. It was so much easier, because otherwise, you've got to find a way to get to the doctor and fill out all the paperwork. And a lot of people really won't tell you that they can't, you know, get out of a chair very easily and things like that because of pride. So what we want to do is make sure that we get them on the right transportation. Is there any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions, comments from the council or the audience for Stacy?
No questions?
Thank you so much.
Well, I'll go ahead and leave these on the back table, and if anybody has questions, there's a phone number on here. You can give us a call, and we're happy to help you out.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Public participation. This is time set aside to address the council on any item that you'd like. If there is an agenda item that you want to address, we'll ask you to hold your comments to that time. You will be given five minutes, and Stacy will start the clock when you come up. So Mr. Frank Johnson. And I was reminded by the clerk, if you could state your name and your address, that would be great for our record-keeping.
Frank Johnson, 608 13th Street, Modesto, California, CEO, National Association for the Advancement of All People. I was contacted by an attorney who was doing an investigation located in Sacramento concerning the city of Turlock. My understanding and the way I was questioned was basically based on what you denied in the paper. So either I'm lying and a whole lot of other people are lying, or, Mayor, you're lying. It happened. Solicitation for the position of city manager happened. And if it takes me six months, I will bring a witness before you and this diocese every meeting. Bullying, I witnessed with my own eyes. A lot of things that was in this newspaper that went public allow me to speak now. I'm not a victim, but the people I represent are. This matter is not over. Pandora's box is just open. I will not be intimidated like I was the last time I spoke. Someone followed me out of here. And I'm sure you know who it was. I will not be threatened, and I will not go away. Many issues are coming to light, such as your meeting schedule, which I find out that public records request is being denied. I want to know, me being a MID customer, what do you got to hide to release your schedules? I don't need to know where you're going in the future. I want to know where them five hundred hours plus went in the past. And all these secret and special meetings, were they at the expense of MID for you to operate in Turlock? Or is the taxpayers in Turlock paying for it for MID? There's a lot of unanswered questions. So therefore, I'm letting you know, we have the attorneys, we have the ability, we will start our own investigation. Whatever's going on, and we know exactly what's going on, will be brought to light. The truth will come out, and I'm definitely not a liar. I was questioned about who it is with the city that's filing the complaints. Why? Because intimidation, bullying, job threatening. All that's going to come to a halt, and it's going to come to a head, and it's going to come to light. Because we will protect those who want to come forward. Everyone up here knows the truth, whether or not there was solicitation taking place or took place for the position of city manager. Please don't let me find out, which I already know. Who knows? Get it straightened out? Please, get it straightened out. Because I'm not a liar. And for you to put me under investigation, or this city to put me in a situation where I'm supposed to divulge who the people I'm representing's information and identification, it didn't happen, because I sure didn't divulge it. Is that my time? It is? All right, I still like to know the outcome of that investigation that cost the city thousands of dollars. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brad Bates. I'm a resident of Turlock. First, I'd like to acknowledge that this is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Now, I don't want to steal the chief's thunder. He may have something to say about this during his comments, but I just would like to add that I think we all know that we owe a debt of gratitude to the folks that provide the public safety. I'm not one for wearing the ribbony things, but they did ask us to wear blue today in appreciation, so this is as close as I come to a, to a blue uniform. The chief said one time, and I think it was at a coffee social a couple, few weeks ago, he said that the, the police are just, they're just part of the flock, but they're the part of the flock that basically keeps the wolves away. And I thought that was a pretty good analogy, so I like that. 2018 is, is starting up, and it's the first regularly scheduled meeting. 2018 is an election year for the entire country. It's going to be interesting. 1962 was an election year, and it was also the year of the Cuban Missile Crisis. President Kennedy was up for reelection, and he also didn't want to start a nuclear war. He said this in a speech back then, "When written in Chinese, the word crisis is comprised of two characters: one represents danger, and the other represents opportunity." Now, I don't know that the City of Turlock is currently facing what could be called a crisis, but we, we most certainly are going to be facing challenges, and I think with challenges will come opportunities. The Modesto Bee this morning, they wrote an editorial about the upcoming year and the election, and they said this, "There are limits to what a country, or a state, or a city can do, but our hope is that voters will choose candidates who will offer pragmatic, realistic solutions that will help the people," end quote. Now, this doesn't always happen, but I agree with the Modesto Bee editors on this. I wrote a thirty-second message to the community about the year that just concluded, and also the opportunities ahead for 2018, and with the permission of the Turlock Journal to use their archives, we turned thirty seconds of statement into a forty-five second video that was looking back at 2017 and looking forward to 2018. I was going to present it here tonight, but, because I thought it turned out pretty good. But I came over this morning to make sure that the technical side would go smoothly. Nobody likes to watch, you know, a few minutes of trying to get a video to upload. Well, in a measure of precaution, the video was given to the city attorney to review, and she contacted and got a written opinion from the FPPC, and I was informed a couple hours later that showing the video was not advised because of prohibitions in the FPPC code that using municipal resources to deliver political messages was not acceptable. Now, this message was in no way political, but because this video does show up on my campaign website, and campaign funds were used to produce it, it shouldn't be shown. And I would be, in effect, using city staff to go online. I'd be using a city laptop to connect to the web, and I'd be using a city-owned audiovisual system to project it, and so that, that produced a conflict. I understand all this, and I accept it. That's, that's fine. I'm actually quite impressed that the city was able to, to do a review, was able to check all of my websites, contacted and got a written FPPC opinion that I did not ask for in under two hours. Now, I've had dealings with FPPC in the past, and I have always. It's taken me days, sometimes weeks, so I am absolutely impressed, and I, I appreciate the efficiency. 2017 has given Turlock a variety of experiences. Some have been tragic, others have been exhilarating. There were moments that seemed to divide us, and others that brought us closer together. However, in the midst of these challenges, blessings, failures, and victories, there were common opportunities shared and chances for strangers to become neighbors and neighbors to become friends. My wish for all of you in 2018 is a strengthened community, ready to face the struggles and surprises on the road ahead together. Now, those four sentences that I just read, that is the, the complete and full sum, total of the message that I wanted to present on video. You can look it up. I'm not going to announce anything here, but those four sentences in total, verbatim, is what comprised the message that I wanted to show with the approved video that we got with the permission of the Turlock Journal. So I will let you be the judge. If this is political campaign or message, or just simply a statement of optimism for the community, it's going to be an interesting year. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Bates, and thank you, staff, for working so hard to make sure that we got that opinion formed. So, moving on, Mr. Treewiler.
Mayor, council, staff, and Turlock citizens, I'm Milt Treewiler, Turlock citizen. Tonight is a very devastating night for most seniors and low-income people living in the City of Turlock. Ellen Simpson, former Republican senator from Wyoming, in a KCBS radio interview said, quote, "We've never had any shared sacrifice in this country since World War II, except for our fine military." So what he said was, "We've never had any shared sacrifice." I want you to get that into your, you know, remember that. Shared sacrifice in this country since World War II, except for our fine military. At the September 26th council meeting, two water rate schedules were presented, a uniform water rate schedule and a tiered water rate schedule. These are two legal ways to structure the city's water rate schedule. Mayor and council, when you approved the surface water treatment plant, you made it legal for the City of Turlock to use a tiered water rate schedule. Council, do not be misled into thinking there was only one way this could be done. There are many ways to structure our water rate schedule. At the September 26th meeting, the tiered water rate schedule was not fully explained. The tiered water rate schedule is a much more equitable and just rate for our many low-income families and most senior citizens. Tonight, with the final reading of 6A, the Uniform Water Rate Schedule Ordinance, you will place an unjust and undue hardship on most seniors and low-income people and families in the City of Turlock. At the December 12th meeting, council meeting, we were told a water rate, at water rate discussion time, that a tiered rate schedule was a penalty on high-water users. At the September 26th meeting, we were told that most of the conservation was done by people, talking about water conservation here in Turlock, and this is a quote, "Most of that conservation was done by people who consume between zero and twenty thousand gallons. Those people are most sensitive to what their rate is, and their rate is higher with a uniform rate, so you're actually fostering more conservation throughout the whole usage spectrum with this rate structure," end of quote. What this meant was, we're making the rates higher for low-income families and most seniors because they can't afford to pay these rates that are being approved tonight, and they will have to cut back on their water usage. By having a uniform commodity rate schedule, it forces low-income people and most seniors to reduce their water usage by making it a financial burden on them. I want you to be totally aware that this is not a shared sacrifice. High-water users and low-water users have to share the sacrifice, and that's what a tiered water rate system does. I want you to be totally, and it's not justice. That's not justice for all, either. I want you, council, and Turlock citizens to understand this. A tiered water rate schedule is legal here in the City of Turlock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treewiler. Diane Bartlett.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, and members of the community. My name's Diane Bartlett. I'm the supervising librarian at the Turlock Public Library, 550 Minaret Avenue, here in Turlock. So I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about some of the events that are coming up in the library, as I normally do. If, this blue sheet might be familiar to some. It's our calendar of events, and this month, some things got left off, so I wanted to assure you that we are continuing with our Tuesday afternoon programs for kids. So every Tuesday at four o'clock, we have a, an event. Today, they painted rocks. And upcoming, we have Craftapalooza next Tuesday, so a little potpourri of all kinds of crafts, something for everyone. The week after is Lego Day, and the final Tuesday in January four, we'll have Family Game Day. So come and learn and to cooperate and learn numbers and how to read those game directions. Lots of fun. Our storytimes have started back, so we have storytimes for the under threes on Wednesdays at ten and eleven, and the three-to- on Wednesdays at ten and eleven, and the three-to-five-year-olds can attend on Thursdays also at ten and eleven. And, and then moving on, this coming Monday, the fifteenth, uh, the library will be closed for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Um, and then, uh, on the twenty-second, Monday at six-thirty, we'll be having a special storytime with the mayor, and we invite all families to that event. Always lots of fun. And then finally, the big question of the year that we get from so many of us is, when is your next book sale? So our friends are having their annual book sale. Members Night is Thursday, the twenty-fifth, from four to eight. You can become a member that evening. Uh, the public sale's Friday, the twenty-sixth, from nine to seven, and Saturday, the twenty-seventh, from nine to five. And that is at the location it's been at for the past several years, the First United Methodist Church on Arbor Way. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your support of your library.
Thank you so much. I know, automatic for Diane. Byron Bogard.
Hi, Byron Bogard, uh, talking about a property over off East Greenway in the county. Um, good evening, uh, Mayor, Council members, city staff, citizens of the community. Uh, the reason why I'm here today is because we were contacted by the Turlock Journal last week in regards to our county permit for cannabis grow on county property, but is within a half mile of the city. And so I know that it's something I, I talked with city staff about, and by the way, you guys have great city staff here, um, very helpful. But we talked with them a little bit, and it'll be up on the agenda at the next meeting. And so I wanted to just come today to introduce myself, as I'm gonna be trying to reach out to all of you over the next week or so, to talk a little bit about some of the solutions and what we're trying to do, so that you can hear, um, the different perspectives and what, uh, what's going on. So again, my name is Byron Bogard, and I hopefully will get the opportunity to sit down and talk with all of you over the coming week. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Uh, and just real, real quick, and this isn't supposed to be offensive, but, uh, I'm gonna keep our conversation here for the twenty-third, so don't, don't bother reaching out to me. I'll, I'll, I'll listen for your presentation on the twenty-third, uh, going forward, but thank you.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was just saying, you're gonna-
You gave this, the citizens of Turlock thirty days to get all this information for years surrounding the chamber, the building, everything. I believe a lot of information was given. That was like three months ago, and I heard the September twenty-sixth meeting, which seemed to bring up a lot of issues. And just so you guys know stats and data-wise, the city of Turlock's live feed YouTube videos of the city council meeting sees about, when you go look, fifty-five to, I don't know, like a hundred and ten views. The September twenty-sixth meeting got a thousand while I shared it. But after then, every meeting has doubled to triple, so two-hundred-and-sixty to three-hundred-and-thirty views. That means people are interested, at the very least. I don't know what number reads in newspapers, TV. So we have issues, and there's a lot of legalities, and all I've been requesting, I'm not even requesting a certain decision. These decisions get brought to council, and it can't get done. But now that I hear Mr. Bates and how he was able to get an FPPC somehow, um, suggestion or a recommendation through the city attorney, he happens to be running for mayor, your mayor, you were trying to get Federer Norton hired as the city manager, didn't work out, and the whole, a lot of the allegations are, is that these positions are working for one council member or the other, or their favorite picks. All of a sudden, Mr. Bates is treated, and everyone's running everything through the FPPC. I just, from my own recollection, I remember when the city of Turlock website had the office of the mayor, and it was a live feed of your Facebook going in there. Well, your Facebook had a lot of at the time, too. The, um, it was the firefighters' union stuff on there, and all of your campaign stuff. Well, if you fast-forward right now, I mean, our interim city manager is the fire chief. The firefighters seem to have done well with their employee negotiations compared to others. You hear complaints of the police department and issues they have, but there was political stuff on the city of Turlock website. I text you, it was taken down, but it's not my job to be the city attorney, and it feels like I'm often like some kind of government affairs, like analyst, when I'm not at all. So we need to get this stuff taken care of, but I see contradictions because we don't have sound policy, protocol, and process. It's all I've been speaking about for the last three months and, you know, fifteen years. And I think it's important that this stuff get taken care of, 'cause we're starting to see contradiction. That's what's gonna set up more and more lawsuits or claims. There could be discrimination. There, we have, um, FPPC, by the way, is, actually stands for Fair, uh, Fair Political, Fair Political Practice Commission, something like that. And there are rules and laws, and the city of Turlock is not adhering to some of them. Another issue, which involves the city attorney, was the road tax mailer. It, road tax mailer with a Vote Yes website and a logo, which is a campaign, was sent out through our utility bills. That's government resources. He can't show a video, but we can send out road tax mailers. Now, that's in the past, but we have Federer Norton here, which was the city attorney, Roy Wozden, which was city manager, he's gone. To this day, that has not been called up to council to address, so we have sound policy that is very consistent. All I'm asking for is that to be addressed, but the city attorney will not address any of this stuff. I don't know if she's advising you, if you're not actually requesting, but these are just issues off the top of my head that show the contradiction, and it's hard to start answering when you say, "Oh, no comment here, comment here." We have potential litigation in a newspaper where you guys are commenting on. I mean, I just want this stuff settled, so we all know what grounds we're actually operating on.
So real quick, just, uh, a clarification on the agendizing, uh, items. So in, we are going to be bringing back some of the, the information that we said thirty days for the chamber, so that will be coming, uh, coming forward when that's all prepared. So we will be addressing that, hopefully, probably not the twenty-third, but hopefully by latest at the beginning of, of February.
Okay.
So that's just for your information.
Yeah, and also that, I mean, a road tax mailer would be great to actually finally get an investig- investigation and a finding. We actually need closure on a lot of this stuff. It, it doesn't matter what the decision is. You guys are deciding, the public can, like, decide how you guys did it, but I know that city council members, too, and I, and I just spoke about this at the special meeting, everyone's saying that the mayor's not commenting, he's the spokesperson. I don't know on what issues you can comment, but also, to all the public and council members, everyone has the right to direct or request from the city manager and city attorney, you guys do, it's your employees, you only have two, to get some of these answers and get it to us. And if a council member puts, to get something on the agenda, any council member can request in writing ten days to get it on. So everyone is now put on notice. Everyone knows anyone can get something on the agenda, or it has to be specifically denied by the mayor or city manager, I think.
So-
So we need to start getting this stuff taken care of.
Absolutely. I've offered to get coffee with you, and still love to get coffee with you, and we can talk about some of these issues.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else from the public, uh, like to address the council? All right, moving on, uh, motion waiving reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title?
So what?
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by council member Dehart, second by council member Scaire. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Waiving reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title. Council member Iscare?
Yes.
Council member Dehart?
Yes.
Council member Boobla?
Yes.
Council member Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Uh, declaration conflicts of interest and disqualifications, looking left and right, seeing none. Disclosure of top ten maximum contributors can be found on the agenda. Consent calendar, any items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate consideration? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
Vince.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by, uh, Vice Mayor Jacob, second by council member Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Adopting the consent calendar. Council member Iscare?
Yes.
Council member Dehart?
Yes.
Council member Boobla?
Yes.
Council member Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa?
Yes, motion, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to final readings, amending, uh, Turlock Municipal Code to Implement Updated Fees and Charges for Property-Related Water Services. Uh, city clerk.
Amending Turlock Municipal Code, Title Six, Chapter Five, Article Five, Section O-one, Regarding Fees and Charges to Implement Updated Fees and Charges for Property-Related Water Services, As Introduced at the December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, City Council Meeting. Council member Iscare?
Yes.
Council member Dehart?
Yes.
Council member Boobla?
No.
Council member Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa?
Yes, motion carries, uh, four to one. Uh, moving on to public hearings, we have none. Uh, scheduled matters, request for appropriate funds for recreation scholarships and accept the Turlock Senior Citizens Group memberships as an approved eligible scholarship recipient for income-qualified seniors. Director Angler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this item before you is, um, in line with the council's, uh, policy goals and implementation plan, in that, um, there's an expectation that staff continue to look for opportunities to partner and expand the city's resources so that we serve the most, uh, the most people in our community. And so, um, this particular request came out of a conversation that was had between, um, a, a member of our community and our Turlock Senior Citizens Group, wherein that there was a recognized barrier to, uh, matching, uh, seniors in our community with the, uh, programs and opportunities at the Turlock Senior Citizens Center, uh, in the form of the membership fee that, that is required. And so, um, that individual was, uh, Diana Kason, and she's, um, our service coordinator for, uh, East Avenue Manor, and she's here tonight. Um, and, uh, she had spoke with Gary Weimer, our current president of the Turlock Senior Citizens Center, and, um, the request was brought to me, and we were brainstorming on, you know, how can we make this work, and how can we connect more seniors with the programs that are being offered there? And so what you have before you tonight is essentially the fruit of that conversation, wherein that, um, we're asking council to, um, recognize the Turlock Senior Citizen Membership Program as a valid program, um, that can be eligible for our scholar, our financial aid scholarship program for the seniors. And so, um, I am very excited about this, this idea. I hope that you are, too. Um, for us, we rely heavily on the Turlock Senior Citizens Program to deliver services to that particular demographic. They do a fabulous job. Um, they have a variety of activities every week, and I think this is just a, a wonderful way to connect, uh, more individuals in our community with those services. And so, um, I know Diana had, wanted to say a few words, and so, um, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Allison. Good evening, city council, mayor, vice mayor, and all council members. Welcome back and Happy New Year. Today, if approved, it will be truly a very happy day for low-income seniors. It will be a wonderful way to welcome two thousand eighteen. Seniors' Struggle. We know that Section Eight has been closed since two thousand ten. The rent has risen, and we have seniors living in apartment buildings, and they have to let go of their transportation. Or they have transportation, they have that hiccup when their car breaks down, and they don't have the monies to do it. This causes some isolation, and my goal is to take advantage of these scholarships and encourage my residents to step out of their apartments, take advantage of the new transit shuttle service that'll be introduced in April, and engage with other seniors at the Turlock Senior Center. All kinds of opportunities, creative expressions, exercise, socialization, sensory opportunities with music. All these are good for the memory. All these are good for mobility. There's, it's just wonderful how the team has worked together. I've had a number of meetings with the Transit Department, and I will be present at the upcoming public forums on January twenty-fifth and February twenty-first to advocate to have the Turlock Library and Turlock Senior Center bus stop restored with those shuttle services. And I will personally recruit people to attend those meetings, and I will market the new partnership as much as I can do. Um, it's not just myself and East Avenue Manor Apartments, it's all low-income seniors, and that's just fabulous. Back in two thousand fourteen, I believe that was the year that United Way released a survey, and they found that one in three homes were living below poverty, and this especially impacted seniors, veterans, disabled. I myself reside at Alpha Bottom. I live in poverty, even though I work part-time, so I'm one of them, and I sure will take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you very much, and thank the whole city of Turlock staff for their wonderful teamwork, and this is just a demonstration of Merlin's Acts of Kindness. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I agree. Awesome.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate Diana clarifying that, um, this particular initiative is not just for their residents, it, it's for the entire, uh, citizens of, of Turlock. Um, I also would be remiss if I didn't recognize Gary Weimer. He's the current president of the Turlock Senior Citizens Group, and we have, um, I feel, a very strong partnership. We appreciate everything that they do for our residents in the community, and, um, we're happy to have them as a partner, so thank you, Gary. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about this item.
Any questions or comments for Director Angler? Yes, council member Dehart.
Uh, wonderful, wonderful idea. I'm, I'm really excited about the opportunities. I think one of the things that I'd really like to know more about, I think it's critical that we make the connections that we have with respect to transportation, uh, provision of services and that tie-in, so on and so forth. Has anything been done about the cost of consumables or expendables, or i- is there, are there any, uh, i- i- is there any consideration been given to those sorts of things?
Um, in terms of the funds that will go towards this particular program? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, anything that would be used in the programming, that would be one-time use and gone.
So currently, the, the membership, and, and Gary, you might be a better person to speak to how the costs are used, but, um, the membership actually gains the individual's access to a variety of programs. Um, there are nominal costs that are associated with certain programs. There might be like an art class where you have to have supplies and things of that nature.
And I guess that's one.
Yes, yes, and so, um, that, we are currently just focusing on the membership, which gives them access to a variety of, um, what I'll just say, no additional cost programs, um, but we also now have the ability to afford them assistance for any, um, specialized classes, if you will, through this action that you're taking tonight.
And I guess going forward, I'd be very interested in knowing what some of those additional costs might be, to see if there isn't other ways to dovetail in.
Absolutely. We have an ongoing dialogue with our Turlock Senior Citizens. As you know, they have a lease for the Senior Citizen Building, so we, we meet regularly and coordinate on issues, and so I can absolutely work with Mr. Weimer to see if there are any other opportunities where we can assist their membership.
Wonderful, thanks, Allison.
Any additional questions or comments, or from the audience, questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Treewiler.
I think this points out, uh, one of the issues with seniors, and I'm a low-income senior. I mean, the fee, the annual fee, which I've just paid to the Senior Center, I'm a member of the Senior Group, I love it, I enjoy playing pinochle there. Tomorrow afternoon, you're welcome to come, if you're a senior.
Shameless plug, I like that, I like that.
But what I wanna point out is, that annual fee is twenty dollars a year, and that's a hardship on seniors here. Now, Diana is talking about seniors living in housing, I mean, uh, but I'm, you know, I'm talking about all seniors. This water rate increase that just went into effect tonight is devastating to seniors. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Yes, Gary.
Um, Gary, one with the president.
You know the rules, microphone, although your voice does project.
Nice try.
Uh, Gary Weimer, current president of Turlock Senior Citizens, de neer, I'm sorry. Uh, anyway, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I was just gonna offer that if I could answer any questions concerning the senior citizens off the cuff, so to speak, I'd be more than happy to, if you, uh, had some concernings of the activities we have. Milt, beat me to the punch about the twenty dollars a year. Covers all the dues that we, or membership that we have, basically. But we do have, uh, over twenty activities that take place throughout the month. I hear anything from, um, exercise at, uh, a stretch pace to a more aerobic walking firm pace. Everybody does their own pace. Mind fluctuates month to month, but it depends on what time of the year it is. Right now, it's kinda slow. Also, we have, um, we have the, the cards, we have, uh, we, we have a couple of pool tables, old pool tables, we shoot pool, which really helps on angles and thought and stuff like that. We have, uh, bingo twice a month, and there's no charge to play that, although the rest of cash prize that comes out of it, e- each game. And so it gives them an incentive, and, you know, we have ten seconds in between calling him each number, it, it keeps the mind focused, it keeps you going, it keeps everybody entertained, and that's the other part of it, is the socialization. People come, we have a good time, we have potlucks. potlucks, we have the activities, we have dominos. We have the, I'll call it typical stuff that the seniors have, every senior citizen. But the main reason is to keep people coming out, getting out of their houses, coming and meeting their neighbors, their fellow Turlockians, I think that's the proper term, and being part of that community. Because when you get older, you start getting yourself shut in by transportation. The bus stop is, is missed, greatly missed. And Mr. Mayor, I know you've spoken to a few of my, my people about that several times because that's, that is the mode of transportation and there's just no other way. It was so convenient right there on the street. But it, it's the opportunity to be able to bring more people, and we've talked a lot, and to bring them to come and participate and to be a member and to have friends and not to feel like they're a, maybe a second class because of how they got there, something like that. One thing that we are very proud of at the senior center is that nobody, nobody ranks any better than anybody else. We're all the same. As I tell them every time I see anybody, if you want to be president, you're more than welcome. Please come on. This is my third year. I love doing it. But if some other people have some different ideas, I'd love for you to come up too because that's what we are. It's just a, we're a big community, like we're here. And I think it's a great idea that you came up with. And Allison and the city people that I deal with, they are incredible. I have to commend her for the partnership we have and Mark and Eric and Richard Taylor that anytime something's going on, I can call him. They are there. They respond instantly. Police, we do have, you know, a problem with people camping out, so to speak, in the building property and stuff like that and the library property. And we, I try to handle it when I can, but when I can't, they're very quick to respond because they, my, most of my people there are in their eighties someplace. I'm not, but some of them are up there, even older, even younger, and they get a little intimidated, especially at night when we have dinners and stuff like that. But the police do an excellent job and we, we thank you for that so very much because it gives them a sense of security and it's very nice. But I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ramble on so much, but I haven't had a chance to speak to y'all. But if you did have any other questions or anything about any of the events that we do there, I'd be more than happy to try to weigh them out for you.
Do you, do you find yourself having to turn people away? If so, how often?
I, I try not to turn people away. I, I can't say I fudge the rules, but there's been some occasions that people have been able to find membership from private donations. Let's put it that way.
So if I gave you $100, five, five people would get in?
Yes. If that's how, I don't go out and solicit it, but sometimes people offer some stuff or I, I've, well, anyway. It, it takes place is what it comes down to. And the, the activities we have that take the minimal charge, we have chair yoga, which is absolutely incredible because you do it on a chair and then you stand behind it or you can stay in a chair or you can release the chair. But it deals with balance, which seniors need so much. And it deals with the breathing and just getting the body back into motion. And we, we do have a charge for each class that we have, but I put up a donation thing. If you can afford to donate something, donate something. If you can't, yeah. It's a very minimal charge and we always get more than we ever need. And the painting does require supplies, you know, because you're working on your own equipment, so like that. And line dancing is about the only other one that really charges anything. I think she charges $3, but boy, you sure work that off. But it's a, yeah, the other, the other ones are, like I said, the bingo isn't. Dominoes is, Dominoes is 10 games at a dime a piece and total score of a quarter. So I usually donate a dollar and a quarter because I lose every time I play. I'm not very lucky, but it's fun. And that game right there, for as simple as it sounds, playing dominoes competitively keeps that mind sharp because every time somebody puts down a new domino, the whole board just changed in front of you and your whole hand. And I tell you what, winning that dime is very important. And it's, and it's good. And that helps in that socialization. That helps in that friendship. Everybody, and people go out and they'll sit there and they'll visit and they'll just talk forever. And that's what they're missing when they go home and they shut themselves in. It's exactly what it is.
Any questions or comments for Gary?
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
At the audience. Well, thank you so much. I'm bringing it back and I have a feeling I know where this is going. So what is the pleasure of the council on this item? Okay. I'll give it to Amy. We have a motion by Councilmember Scare, seconded by Councilmember Boobla. Clerk, please call the roll.
Appropriating $10,167 to account number 2706163539947180 Recreation Scholarships from Fund 270 Recreation Grants Recreation General Unallocated Reserves for Recreation Scholarships. Accepting the Turlock Senior Citizens Group membership is an approved eligible scholarship recipient for income-qualified seniors to join the Turlock Senior Citizens Group and participate in senior activities. Councilmember Scare?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysen?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Diana, Allison, and Gary. Appreciate it. We are going to take a short five-minute recess. All right, if anyone wants to join us, come on back. I'll now bring it back to item B, a request to award RFQ number 17-567 and approving a professional services agreement with one of the recruitment firms as outlined in the report to conduct an executive recruitment for this position of city manager. HR director, or manager, Sarah Eddy.
Oh, it's on. Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The item before you is a request to award RFQ number 17-567 and approve an agreement with a recruitment firm to conduct the recruitment for the position of city manager and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement. On November 17th, 2017, the City of Turlock issued request for qualifications for recruitment firms to conduct the recruitment for the position of city manager. The RFQ was advertised on the city's website and with the Sacramento Bee and the San Jose Mercury News. In addition, human resources staff made multiple contacts with various recruitment firms informing them of the RFQ process and submission requirements. The deadline to submit proposals was December 22nd, 2017. The city received a total of seven proposals from recruitment firms. Each of the seven proposals received, met the minimum qualifications. You were provided with each of these proposals in your agenda packet. The staff report lists each of the recruitment firms with their respective fees. In reviewing the proposals, many of the firms provided a standard fee-based proposal with additional fees associated to other services pertaining to the recruitment process such as advertising, travel, background checks, et cetera. The cost of the base proposal is included in the staff report. Additional documentation regarding potential additional costs was provided to the council earlier in the day as well as copies made available at the dais. Once a recruitment firm has been selected, the council can make a determination on the not-to-exceed contract amount. Are there any questions?
Question, comments from Ms. Eddy at this point. Yes, Councilmember Scare.
Hi, Sarah. Yeah, I noticed that most of these were, like you said, were all pretty standard, except for the one from Houston. I said there's two blanks in here so that they don't furnish these preliminary interviews or candidate recommendations. Is that, is that normal?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to ask.
One of the, I said, they're all about the same except for one, the one from Houston, Texas.
Oh, from Houston, Texas, okay.
Yeah. Shows they don't, they don't help with the preliminary interviews or the candidate recommendations. So is that, is that pretty?
I do see that.
So I guess that's something we'll have to talk about, see if we have something.
You know what, I can, I can look in that and if you give me a couple of minutes or I can get back to you on that.
Yeah.
Because I do see that they're not marked.
Okay. Any other question or comments for Ms. Eddy at this point from the council? Any question or comments from the audience on this matter? We'll bring it back. Council's going to have a conversation. Oh, yeah, Mr. Woods, come on.
Appreciate all the work that's been done on. My name is Jeff Woods. I'm a resident of Turlock. I was interested in this. I, the only thing, it was just an observation. I read through all of the proposals. Had a few minutes, but no. I looked through them and I noticed that the first one that is the lowest price compared to the other ones, their, their price was their fee and then they mentioned the other amount.
Right.
Which actually brought them up to the same amount.
Correct.
Everybody else did their fees and I just, I'm sure you probably caught that. I just wanted to mention that because it looks like the lowest bid, but when you actually add all the other stuff, it's actually pretty much almost toward the top of the, of the other ones. So that was the only thing.
You get excited by the sticker price and then you realize, ah, there's a few fees tacked onto there.
Yeah, that's all.
Perfect. Absolutely. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Francis.
Yes, I wanted to ask, is this process going to be the same as the last process with community panels and a recruitment firm or?
So last time we had a recruitment firm and then we did community panels. That was something that we decided, but we're taking it one step at a time and we're creating a recruitment service and then we'll decide that together as a council with the recruitment.
Okay. Okay, great.
Great question, though. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, bring it back to council for considering. All right, bring it back to council for consideration and conversation. Yes, councilmember Dehart.
You know, I think one of the other things that, assuming all other things are equal, aside from price, a pretty starkly different item in each case is the amount of time it would take from start to finish. We have a range of from six weeks on up to twenty weeks and I guess that also needs to be considered as we evaluate the quality, the presentation, the familiarity, the ease of working, however you can determine that from the proposals themselves. I, I kind of, I, I guess it could be construed, I've got a Cadillac budget, but a Volkswagen income, but I, I really liked what I read about Ralph Anderson, number one, but interesting VCA. I liked Ralph Anderson more because the length of time, eleven to thirteen weeks, all of the other services essentially the same. However, when I start to quantify the value of each week or each day, that's another place at which they kind of equal out. Six to seven weeks as opposed to seventeen weeks and ten thousand dollars difference and I say to myself self, which is that they would really like to, to go with at this point. But those were the two of the list that I specifically noted would be of interest for me to pursue, just as an initial pass.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Jacob.
So I was reviewing the various proposals, that is something that I noticed, Jeff, thank you for that as well. And I appreciated the spreadsheet and the work that you've put into this, Sarah, and getting us the, I guess, the sticker price, if you will, and then getting us what the total fees might be. Some of them I felt were a little bit unrealistic, the six weeks, I mean, how, how do we get somebody qualified, how do we advertise it for long enough and go through the process in a way that's sufficient to the standards that I think we all want for this recruitment? For me, if they're, if we're kind of maybe going through that as we're trying to narrow it down, Peckham and McKinney actually stood out as favorite of mine. I think the way that they presented their proposal was very straightforward, didn't have maybe as much of the fluff as some of the other recruiters and, and looking at some of the past cities that they've worked on and the, I think they put a stat in there that they had, you know, a guarantee for a year if any, you know, if we, if we needed to bring them back, it's like a full guarantee, so. And also the fact that they, and I guess maybe I could look this in a positive light, don't have any, not in any ways of disrespect to any, any of our current employees, but they haven't had any dealings with the city of Turlock and so maybe coming in with the fresh set of eyes might be a positive as well. I did like Avery and Associates as well as Ralph Anderson and so those, I guess, were my, my top three, but I, I would view Peckham and McKinney most, most favorably.
Okay. Councilmember Skerr, council, councilmember Booblaq.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the, the, I had a question on Peckham also because as I was looking at, which says meet with city designees, Peckham didn't really, it says they'll meet with city but not specify if they meet with the staff or the council or both, and I think what we're looking for is someone that's gonna work with the council. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Yeah, Sarah, do you?
Sarah, if you can, sorry.
No, no.
This is what, what, what they proposed to us as kind of a sample timeline and the way we're gonna be able to work together to kind of craft that in our own way and I know that there's a desire for, to be, to meet with us on an individual basis as we're kind of forming the process and so I think, I don't, I didn't see anywhere that that would be something they wouldn't be willing to do. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, that that's something.
No, I, I would agree with that. I think they would be willing to meet with, however the council wants to direct the firm, they would be willing to meet with staff, council, whatever we desire.
Does anyone turn? Yeah. Any other comments or, yeah, any other comments or questions? Or, councilmember Booblaq? It's a free-flowing discussion.
So this'll probably be the only time you'll hear me in 2018 talk about actually thinking money is, is no object, because this, this position is so important to this, this community and to us and our, our effectiveness, that trying to lowball this is, is a waste of time and I think that we need to look at, if we, if we are true to our statement that we wanna cast a wider net, then that in fact means that we need to go a little longer than six weeks. Bob Murray and Associates, it, to me, is the best, they actually sit there and we can, we can start taking money out because they're describing things that we may or may not want to utilize, but within just a little thing, they wanted us to know what they could provide us and how much that would be. The itemization, they're being very upfront with us and honest with us and, and so they're my, my top pick and obviously they're, they're well-used throughout the, the state of California. So people see a reputable company and will, will actually log in and see what, what that job entails.
Do you have a number two or three, or anybody?
Nope, I'm stubborn.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Skerr, do you have any?
After reviewing all this, I, I agree that Bob Murray was probably my number one and Anderson was my number two.
Okay. Yeah.
My, my main reservation with Bob Murray was the amount of time. I think they're, we're tacking on an additional month on, you know, and I know we don't wanna, as you said, lowball it or anything to that effect, I mean, the effective cost more or less is the same if you go across the board. The, the cheapest one was VCA, which was, was twenty weeks, so I don't know, that sort of goes, makes me feel uneasy as well. So I'm maybe not as inclined to go with them just because I think we want, we want this to be done expeditiously but done well and the median of around eleven to thirteen, fourteen weeks, you know, why, why should we add an additional month to that?
Yeah, councilmember Dehart.
You know, I think the one name that continues to pop up, with the exception of councilmember Booblaq unfortunately, is Anderson. Part of the, part of the reality is, and whether it's Anderson, whether it's Murray, there are quantities that are known and I think that's critically important in terms of ease of working with, HR ease of working with council. There's probably some people that would be worked with that we, we've worked with in the past, which may be a benefit to us. I think that the approach to, of this council proceeding forward to select this next city manager is really gonna be critical and, and we're gonna probably have some extra time devoted to that effort, so. Whether it's, whether it's Murray, I, I will have to make a statement if we go that way, but Anderson, both appear to me to be a common thread.
Sarah, if, can we, can we ask, you're the HR professional in the room, if you had any that stood out to you as ones that you would recommend for us to go with or that you feel would be appropriate picks?
You can, you can. So I read through these a number of times and in my professional opinion, the three firms that I liked are Peckham and McKinney, Avery and Associates, and Ralph Anderson.
And if you can answer a follow-up question, in your opinion, would the quality of work differ between any of those three or the potential outcome?
Well, I would say that I like the outreach to the potential candidates. You mean, the three as a whole, you mean what stood out in those three?
Between the three, do you, in your professional opinion, do you feel that we would get a different type of candidate or a different type of process, one that would be more strong or less strong?
Oh, okay.
Between the three that you just mentioned?
Right, so.
Peckham, Avery and Ralph.
Okay, so I, I, what I read that I liked was the outreach to the potential candidates because they have very large networks and not only do they advertise, but they contact and they contact, it's, that's something that's important to them and the engagement with city staff was important. The number of local successful recruitments, if you go in and look at their recruitments that they've done, their success rates are very high. I, I also liked the process because they were direct, they didn't put a lot of fluff in there, they were very direct and very concise on what they would do and the processes to, to get us to the point we want to be.
And so would it be accurate to say that the three are generally on equal footing, in your opinion? The three that you mentioned? Answer honestly, I mean, because I think it's gonna help us to make a decision.
I mean, I, I personally, I, I like Peckham and McKinney just because, and I, I read through this right before the meeting again, it's just, they're, they're detailed but they're very specific, they know exactly what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, and if you look at their track record, it's, it's excellent. They're, they, I think there is an advantage to being local, not that you should, you know, go by my thought about that, but they, they are local, there are others that are local as well, but, I mean, and I did go onto the website and I, I looked at just the offerings that they have and that's who I felt if I had to choose, but I'm not choosing, the, the council is.
So I guess then my next, if, if we are, not to steal Amy's role as kind of the council penny pincher, but the, even if, if, if the answer was to come back that, yeah, they are all on equal footing, I think it would make sense to also maybe consider the financial part of it. I mean, is it worth, in our minds, to pay approximately a twenty percent premium for roughly five thousand dollars more for somebody that would give us an equal product or in, in this circumstance, I would be more inclined to take the professionals' recommendation, experienced HR manager that we all respect, that we're gonna be actually getting a better product for five thousand less, so I don't know how, how else, how we can beat that. But I'm, I'm open to, you know, discussing it more if anybody feels differently, if you're willing to listen to that.
Yes, councilmember Skerr.
Mayor, I think that was my, it was one specific fee, the others at least provided some possibility of working with us since we had already done considerable volume of work with respect to the basic information assembly. So whether it's a brochure, whether it's change of date, whether it's whatever, we have a lot of that. Some of these others indicated that at least be willing to work with us on that price. That did not, Peckham did not, so that, that was my point.
Does, so if I'm, I'm just trying to narrow it down a little bit, so does Avery and Ralph Anderson, councilmember Skerr, their breakdown, that, that's more comfortable for you? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I have to probably, either, either of those, I can try to prove this.
So of those, which ones do you like more? And, and again, this is, when you do this at the open dais, this is the flip side, a lot of pregnant pauses, so.
Right.
It's just fine, we're all thinking.
We're gonna go this way, okay, I saw, my number two was Ralph Anderson, so I'm still, I'm still kinda hanging in there.
Okay. Councilmember Jacob, what are your thoughts, or councilmember Booblaq?
I, I don't mean to open this can of worms in any way and I don't feel that good policy is made solely based off of public perception or what, how things might be perceived, but the only sort of hesitation that I have with Ralph Anderson is the fact that we have both of our, our interim city manager and our city attorney were both, they were used in their recruitment, fantastic picks by absolutely no means, I'm not trying to weigh on that at all, but we know that the process, the former process that we went through has come under a lot of public scrutiny and so I think that if we were to find maybe a way to create a new process in a more sterile environment, that might be of benefit to us.
Okay. So on that note, what are everyone's thoughts on Avery or Peckham? I'm just batting that around, sorry.
If I had to pick, I would say Avery.
Okay, okay, there's a new one, all right. So, yeah. What are your thoughts on?
I think as I reviewed, mayor, as I reviewed, Avery was certainly a part of my consideration. I do appreciate councilmember Jacobs' concerns. I, I think that the, many times we have to do our own self-evaluation and if we're having problems with the recruiter, obviously that would save one tail. If others are, at some point, we may just have to say, okay. But the reality is that, you know, I, I don't know, I'm still probably there with Anderson, I'm still, I, I could have, I know, my second choice, as I mentioned, was the last one on the VCA code, but we could, I could certainly, the third was Avery, so.
Okay. So let's bat around Avery for a second. What are everyone's thoughts on Avery?
Can we throw three names in a hat?
Avery has a good reputation.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Jacob, what are your thoughts?
They're, they're my number two, so I'm not going to be disappointed at all, I think. One more, one more pitch for Peckham is that, again, that it's, it's what our HR professional is recommending, but it's, it's my number two pick as well, so however the will of the council is, I'll be supportive of that.
Yeah, I think something to, not to throw something out there, but yeah, I think for me, I, I was leaning towards somewhere, something shorter, as, as short as possible. Again, I see the flip side of doing a large act for a long time and getting a lot of things, but I was trying to go as short as possible, so seventeen weeks versus eleven to thirteen or fourteen, that's where I'm at, but again, I'm, I'm really in a listening mode tonight to hear what the council's going towards, so.
Can I offer?
Yes, please.
Okay, so when we added up the timelines, some of those could vary, when, sometimes some of the proposals said two to four weeks in one area of the recruitment, some said four to five weeks, so we erred on the side of the longest period of time, if that helps at all.
Yeah, so actually, that helps tremendously for me, to be honest, so these, this is public documented, the scope of services, the timeline, so I, for me, can read it as almost a maximum, right?
Correct.
That it shouldn't go.
Correct.
And then if this council is willing to, because we are going to be heavily involved, know that there's gonna be a lot of special meetings, there's gonna be a lot of, to, to get information moving forward, if we're committed to that aggressive timeline, I'd be comfortable with, with that, because I would like to shave off a little bit of time. But again, I agree with the longer posting. I'm just like Satan bolt. So with that, I don't know what, I'm hearing Avery and Associates, but I don't know, I don't know, is there anything else? Peckham, for Ralph Anderson, for anything else? Bob Murray? So will the council. I wait for motions, I don't.
I'll be audacious a little and, and make a motion to accept the Peckham and McKinney's proposal.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion for Peckham and McKinney, is there a second?
Yeah, I'm with a second there.
Okay, all right. Didn't see that coming, all right. So we have a motion by councilmember Jacob, setting by councilmember Skerr on Peckham and Associates, is there any final comments or questions? Yes?
We also need to establish a not-to-exceed.
Ah. So the person who made the motion on the floor, are you assuming the not-to-exceed is the twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars?
Twenty, twenty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read the first one.
A whole hundred dollars more, but yes.
So what we did is we added a fifteen percent contingency fee and that amount for Peckham and McKinney, I knew I was gonna mess up that one time. It's twenty. It's 26,000, and then the 15% is 29,900 with a contingency, just in case it goes over.
That's a not to exceed?
Not to exceed, not to exceed.
So I amend my motion to include a not to exceed 29,900.
Okay. Do you still second that?
And that 15% was straight across the board, right? For everybody?
Yes, yes.
For each of them, it'll be 15%? Yeah. All right. Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'll just read it. Pursuant to Government Code Section 40602, the mayor specifically authorized to execute all warrants drawn on the city charter, all written contracts and conventions made or entered into by the city, and all instruments requiring the city seal. In addition to the mayor, pursuant to Government Code Section 40602, the city manager of the City of Turlock is hereby authorized to execute all warrants drawn on the city charter, all written contracts and conventions made or entered into by the city, and all instruments requiring the city seal, once approved by the city council. It looks like that was updated in 2015, is my recollection. So that's what the ordinance says. And specifically references the Government Code section.
Perfect. So full disclosure, so we can't do that, but I'm going to have the city manager sign these warrants publicly. So that's just me stating that. We good? Okay, so thank you for the clarification, city attorney, city clerk. So we have a motion on the floor for Peckham and McKinney not to exceed 29,900. Those are the two key points of that motion. And it was seconded by Councilmember Skerritt? Correct. Okay, clerk?
Awarding RFQ Number 17-567 and approving a professional services agreement with Peckham and McKinney in an amount not to exceed 29,900 to conduct an executive recruitment for the position of city manager and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Councilmember Skerritt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soise.
Yes, motion carries, one, two, three, four to one. I don't know how to count. Thank you so much, thanks so much for your hard work. Now, Councilmember Eddie. That was a slip, I'm sorry. Now.
That's a good motion, by the way.
HR manager Eddie. And we're looking forward to moving as quickly as possible on this recruitment. All right, moving on to staff updates. We have no staff updates, but there's a staff update for the Development Services Department within the agenda. Management for the agenda, non-agenda items, interim city manager or city attorney, seeing none. Council items for future consideration? Yes, Councilmember Booblaq?
I'd like to agendize that we discuss having an ordinance that actually, anytime somebody is filling in for our city manager position, it's within, it's only a four-week period, and then there has to be a 30-day waiting period. That way, no department's ever going to be in a position where they don't have their leader there completely giving them 100%.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on, council comments? Yes, Councilmember Booblaq?
So in my vote on the water, at that moment, I'm misprocedural. You're only allowed to say yes or no. So I had my no answer. My response in why I did that is twofold. I've been working with Mr. Cook for years on trying to find a way to offset the cost for those who can't afford it. And though we're getting closer, we're not there. And I appreciate that we need to work towards this. But having worked over two decades in law enforcement, I would say every day I came across a family who didn't have water and electricity, and they stole it. And so this is going to make others be in that position. And that, to me, is really, that's just not how I want to lead a community. I understand that we need it, but I also think we need to kind of find another way to resolve trying to help those who can't make that cost. So that was my answer, why I had a no.
Awesome. Councilmember Dehart?
And I guess I would just offer up that my yes answer was based upon the fact that we really have absent a viable tier option. That was my original understanding in our discussion for right now, that it's absolutely essential to get the water rates passed. So do I like it? No, I'm a senior. Yes, I'm unlimited. At this particular point, we didn't really have a chance. And so our choice. And so, but it would behoove us, and I think, it's not me that can do the charging, but I think here in front of us, we can charge water to come up with some sort of proposal in the timeframe, as soon as it's possible, to begin to explore that tiered rate. I think that's certainly a wonderful concept. If we can somehow break through the legalities of it or the illegalities of it and have it conform in a workable fashion here in Turlock. Second comment, I may, or may be so bold. This, today's what? Tuesday, the?
The night.
Nights.
Good, Councilmember Skerritt.
It's a good catch. Next week, I'll be in Sacramento, end of the week, chairing the Community Services Policy Committee. We've got to focus this coming year in three specific areas. There's, well, it's the fourth, but I can't remember what it was. But the first area is really critical. We've gone around and around and around on a couple of different issues. Number one is public safety. How is it that we can get tools for our communities, and this is based on retaining local control, which I'm firmly committed to? I know each member here and certainly each one of you understand that the more local control we can retain, the better off we're going to be. In any case, what are some tools that we can provide for our law enforcement to aid them in providing safer communities? Whether it's by policy, whether it's by law, whether it's by ordinance, whether it's by whatever. I think some of the controls that we had, some of the tools that we had were stripped away, and I think ignorantly and inappropriately, and unfortunately so. We've kind of tied law enforcement's hand behind the back. And I think that's, my apologies, you know, on behalf of a state that never should have done what they've done. I think more people are starting to realize that. In any case, I'm chairing that particular committee. We've got that, public safety, number one on the agenda. The league will be tracking legislation going through the system that will have to do with that particular issue. There has been a task force that has just concluded, I think, in November, December timeframe, that is going to present their result of their study, of their effort on homelessness. And I think we'll be able to derive some benefit from that here in Turlock. We have made some great strides here in Turlock. I remember when the Turlock Gospel Mission and Pastor Jeff Wood were in their infancy and the many, many wonderful efforts that were expended. And I'd speak up if I could, I've got nothing left, sorry. In any case, homelessness is a big issue. And I think the legislature has somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,500 pieces of legislation in any given year. And they track about 2,000 and can really only key in on about 350. And that's the work that we're involved in. I'm looking, once again, now I can't remember the third or the fourth. So in any case, I'll be up there on the 18th, looking forward to chairing that committee and directing the efforts of our committee. Fellow mayors, fellow council members and mayors, there are professional staff, attorneys, managers. And then we do have some league partners that will be sitting on that committee as well. So I'm looking forward to that effort. I'll have a full report when I get back.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Skerritt?
Yes, I had, previously I'd suggested that maybe we consider kind of, it's called a city retreat, but basically it's an open meeting. It's not a closed session, it's not agendized. I think it's something that is worth looking at. We have a lot of major issues coming up. There's a lot of public perception out there. I think that we need to set something up for our city council with an independent mediator, moderator, whatever you want to call them, to help sit down and communicate what we're trying to do and how we can communicate with each other in a efficient and civil manner. We've had issues and actually it was, one of our county supervisors had suggested that this is something maybe Turlock needs to try, and I agree. So I'd like to find some way to put this on an agenda, maybe get staff to look into how we can do this.
Perfect. I'll have you sit down with the city manager for a little bit and flesh it out. And then, yeah, we'll work on it to get on agenda in the future. Any additional comments? All right, closed session, we have no items adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Booblaq, seconded by Councilmember Eddie, I mean, Councilmember Dehart. All those in favor, say aye. All right, we adjourned.